Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular board meeting of the Beverly Hills Unified School District. And we are in open session. If there's people on the link, please be advised that we are in open session. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Ben Wardrop to come forward and do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Good evening. Please stand. Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, I would like to ask Katie Warren if she would come forward and do the mission and vision for us.
Just a second.
I got my gloves here.
Good evening. The BHUSD mission statement, vision statement, and values. Mission: Educational Excellence. Vision: Our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Warren. Okay, and at this time, I would like to call on our student board member, Charlotte Cave, to read the community pledge, please.
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge differences of opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable for this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cave. All right, at this time, I would like to make a motion, I'm ready to make a motion, to approve the agenda and move an item 13B, the superintendent's report, to after item six, the report of closed session action. So could I get a second to the motion, please?
I hereby second.
Thank you, Mrs. Manichieri. Can I get an approval for the motion, please? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, five to oh, and with one from the student member. Okay, Dr. Chernus, was there any action in closed session?
Yes, the board voted five-zero to approve a separation agreement with employee 0000025991. The motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Ms. Manichieri.
Thank you so much. And now for your report, please, Dr. Chernus.
Thank you. I'll coldly tee it up here. It is a very exciting evening to be presenting to the board staff's recommendation for our new executive director of human resources, Dr. Isaac Gates. Dr. Gates, please come on up here while I say a few words about you. Dr. Gates, I have known him over ten years. When I was superintendent in San Marino, we had the, we were the top-performing school district in California, and we were slipping, and La Cañada was right at our heels. And we were tasked with finding a principal. And so we did a search all over the state, all over the country, and we found this candidate, Dr. Isaac Gates, who was an assistant principal at the time for five years at Los Almeitos. And so we went to Los Al, and we, I was blown away. We were there for four hours. I was with a board president, two staff members. And we had ASB students come and talk about Dr. Gates. We had his colleagues come, we had his principal come, and then we had the superintendent come. And we knew after that that Dr. Gates was the right person for the job. He came to San Marino High School with high expectations, and he did not let us down. And we were the highest-performing high school in California during his tenure there. Dr. Gates, he has his doctorate from USC, so he is a Trojan, where he also teaches, when he does have time, he teaches in the EDD program. He, there's so many accomplishments that I could speak to, but what I would say best is his connections with people. Where you're hiring him for human resources, because not only did he get his degree in early education, not only did he teach special education, he's taught just about every grade there is, but he also connects well with students, and he connects well with teachers. And he's a great coach for our principals. He, in his last position, he hired our current principal of Beverly Hills High School, Loeanne Saraxah. So he has an eye for talent. And I just couldn't be more proud of watching Dr. Gates grow. And part of my job is getting the right people on the bus, and you absolutely are. The other Dr. Gates here, Rashida, his wife, is a curriculum director in Ocean View School District. And then his daughter, Grace, is a ninth grader, and she is a volleyball superstar. So we need to start recruiting Grace to come play volleyball for us. And then his youngest, Emerson, is here, and she's in fifth grade at McGaw Elementary, which is my former elementary school. So there's a lot of connections with the Gates family. And so, Dr. Gates, I want to congratulate you and welcome you to the Beverly Hills community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words, Dr. Gates?
Sure, I prepared a few words. Good evening, Madam President, Ms. Marcus, esteemed members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Chernus, and Executive Cabinet. I'm deeply honored and humbled by the trust that you've placed within me, the responsibility as Executive Director of Personnel Services. I look forward to learning the culture and the community of Beverly Hills Unified School District and supporting the teachers, students, and staff as Executive Director of Personnel. What I'm really excited about is the promise of public education here in Beverly Hills. The promise to help kids realize their full potential, I believe is more than just a phrase here. I believe it's a real promise. I know it's a real promise because I live that promise. I am the fulfillment of public education. Starting with my third-grade teacher, Ms. Eleanor Dollar, she helped me to realize my full potential. She challenged me, she encouraged me to be my best self. When growing up in Florida, as a military kid, while my parents were going through a divorce, let's just say I was a little bit more than a handful as an elementary school student. But she saw through my challenges, and she saw right through my potential, saw me right to my potential. And then my counselor, Ms. Angie Carpenter, in high school, she paid for my college application. When I think about her generosity, I like to think that she, I like to think of that $25 as the best $25 spent in the history of $25. Because of those two public educators, I'm able to be in front of you tonight. Following high school, I attended the University of Central Florida while studying early childhood education, because I wanted to become a third-grade teacher, just like Ms. Dollar. I also played Division One football. Following graduation, I taught in Orlando for two years, third grade, before moving out to Southern California. When landed here in Southern California, I landed in Pasadena, where I taught for 12 years. While teaching, I earned my Master's of Education. And then, like Dr. Chernus said, later, my doctorate at the University of Central Florida. I went on to be assistant principal at Los Al, and then one of my greatest joys was to be the principal for my kids at McGaw Elementary. Went on to be the principal at San Marino High School, where Dr. Chernus, thank you so much for that opportunity. And I'd like to share that at Inglewood Unified, where I served as the executive director of secondary education, some of the most proudest work we did is helping to bring in, change the traditional bell schedule from a six-period day to a four-by-four block schedule, which gave the students immediate access to classes that they needed to graduate. Also, we established an annual college tour for them, so to show them opportunities post-high school graduation. Because of two educators, I was able to do all of that. And I look forward to providing that same level of care and service and support to help students realize their full potential here in Beverly Hills Unified School District. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, do I want to go around the horn a little bit, and if you want to say something, Ms. Cave?
Welcome to Beverly Hills Unified. I am so glad that you're here, and congratulations on your role. I know you're going to be great.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Stewart?
So great to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
I am over the moon to have you here. I know you've been through quite a lot lately. We were hoping to have you here several months ago, not to get into your personal life, but I'm just glad to see you healthy, and your family is beautiful and wonderful, and it's just a reflection on you, on how amazing that they are. Just listening to your background, you couldn't be a better fit for this role. From the military family to even having folks that split up, it just gives you all of the data, all of the life experience that we need now, not only in your background as a family man and as an educator, but just as a leader. It is so necessary right now. The HR department is one of our, parts of our unit that needs some good love. I think that you're the right person to do that. I appreciate that Dr. Seaman and you can share the same barber. You guys can go to the same place. Actually, Will, you're back there too, brother. And I loved your energy the first time that I met you, and I love it twice as much now. So welcome, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Manichieri?
Thank you, Dr. Gates. It's an honor to welcome you here. What I'm so enthused about is your positive energy and your positive outlook. I would agree that your extensive background and the different lives that you've lived is obviously something that's going to lend itself to your compassion and your understanding of our staff, our students, the board, our parents. And so I really welcome all of you, all the pieces of you, the part of you that grew up not in California, the part of you that was a football player, the part of you that is a product of the public education system, believing in it. And then, of course, some of your objective accomplishments. The fact that you were able to, in three years, take San Marino High School to number one in the state is something that I don't take lightly. In the last several months, we have hired a lot of sophisticated, proven leaders with proven results. And the team has been working great together, and I think you're also a proven leader with proven results, and I welcome you and your family.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Stern?
Well, thank you so much for your commitment to our school district. I'll say a little more as we move along, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would say, yes.
Sabag?
Welcome, and we're, I'm super excited that you're going to start working with us, and I'm really happy to see your beautiful family. And just by seeing your two daughters, it's a reflection on you. So, welcome, and thank you.
Thank you so much for saying that. I'd be remiss if I don't introduce them. I know Dr. Chernus did. I'd like to say that Rashida is my better four-fifths. Some folks go for a better half. I need it four-fifths, and she really rounds me out. So she's a great public educator, a great partner in life. We have three children, all in public education. Our oldest, David, is 23. He's studying economics at Cal Poly. Grace, who's 15, is a sophomore at Los Almeitos High School. And Emerson, who is 10, a fifth grader at McGaw Elementary, all products of public education. So they may feel, they may not know how lucky they are to have two parents as educators, but I'm sure they'll know it down the road.
And I would just like to echo the sentiments of everybody on the board so far. I'm looking forward to, I really am thrilled that maybe that we get a stronger volleyball team, but I don't know if that's up to, I have an interest in the volleyball team, as you know. But again, I want to welcome you and thank you for coming. And I know that I have one member of the administration who's going to look forward to some help, and that's Dr. Seaman, because he's been doing yeoman duty, and he's going to readily open arms for you. So thank you again, and it's a pleasure to meet you and see you again, and I look forward to seeing you in the trenches.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And so, and now...
I'm going to continue my report, Mrs. Marcus.
I was going to ask, is there more? Do we get more? You want to come back?
You get more.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I want to say that I've had several committees I put together in my time as an educator, but this superintendent's advisory committee here was incredible. We held our first meeting last week. We had, just about everybody that was invited came. Ninety percent of the people showed up. We, what we did is we broke the groups into four levels: high school, middle, upper elementary, and primary. And at each level, the members of the committee put together three strengths and three challenges within that area. And so what Chrissy, Chrissy did a great job organizing the meeting and the event. And Dr. Seaman and our directors helped us organize this material. And so what you see here, and I'll be sure to send this to you, is you see essentially like sort of a, these are Venn diagrams you're looking at. So you're looking at what we have in common, and you're looking at what areas are sort of specific to those areas. And I'm not going to get into all of it, but I will say, I learned quite a bit. I learned about the instructional needs at the schools. I learned about the needs for supervision, the needs for safety and security, for teaching and learning. So it was just a great event. We will be meeting again. And I just got tremendous feedback from the parent community. And so I thank all the members of the superintendent's advisory committee for coming and for being part of it. We had a great Halloween celebration. I got to go to the police station and the haunted house, which was scary. But there was, it was just really cool to see so many families go and take part in that. And then also to see the tremendous Halloween parade for the little preschool kids. And those kids will be coming to us, so we had a great time. And then, of course, Elrod A. and Horseman had amazing Halloween parades as well. And I know our board members had a lot of fun taking part in those parades. I got to go to the farmer's market for the first time this weekend. I'd never been. And so I took my son Leo, and it was fabulous, and we got some produce and some fruit. And it was just a great reminder of how special this community is, and how many people go out to these sort of events on weekends. The weekends, really, the community comes alive, and we had a great time there. And then we went to see all the doggies. And so it was Doggy Days, and there was some really cool doggy costume contests. And there was, more importantly, and there was adoptions. We didn't come home with a puppy, although Leo really wanted one. But it was a great city event, and Russell Stewart was there with his daughter and his wife. And there was a lot of city officials there, and his dog, yes, Rudy. And we were actually talking about possibly having a booth at this event next year, because it would be a good opportunity to sort of connect with the public. So Beverly Hills High School Theater presents at the Salter Family Theater, which we will be doing a ribbon cutting, actually, on the 13th, I believe, Little Women. And so we're really excited. Salter is now online for this. This will be a big sort of opening for the theater. And then, of course, we have Peter's Auditorium opening very soon as well. So that's something to look forward to, and tickets are obviously available through our website. Just a reminder, there's no school coming up next Tuesday for Veterans Day. And we do want to thank all our veterans. My father's a veteran. And we have a lot of veterans in the community, and this is a special community that really honors their veterans. So I wanted to say something about that. And that concludes my report.
Sure. I don't think we have any crossings between our presentations today, so that's great. I loved your pictures from the farmer's market. The farmer's market is my favorite place to go on Sundays. My friends and I always go there. It's so fun. So I thought that was cute that you included that. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cave. Mr. Stewart?
It was nice to see you at Doggy Days. My daughter thinks that now every time she steps out of the house, the golf cart comes by to give her a ride somewhere, so thank you for that. It was a wonderful time at the Doggy Days. I definitely concur, I think, having a presence there, especially because of how many kids and families have dogs. I think to have a presence there would be awesome. And yeah, Halloween, I do concur, that the haunted house was pretty epic. I give a shout out to Beverly Hills PD for that, especially Officer Dave Rudy, our SRO. He was, he's such a good actor. It's fantastic. And yeah, I hope you can come to the farmer's market more. I haven't been since my accident, but I used to go every weekend. It's phenomenal, so. And also, too, just always great to see your kids. They've always got such great energy. And I was glad to see some of the photos up there, so you're becoming more of a Beverly Hills resident, you know, every day, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Manichieri?
Yes, thank you for your presentation, Dr. Chernus. With respect to the superintendent's advisory committee, I was a little overwhelmed when you started to do it, because I thought you would be overwhelmed. But then after the fact, I want to first commend you on accepting what I understand to be everybody who applied on it. And I think that that says a lot about you, that you welcomed every single applicant. And I know that the, the community who applied really appreciated you welcoming them. I also received a lot of feedback just about how organized it was and how nice it was to get to know you. I felt like I really got to know you that first speech that you gave at the staff development day, which I loved. And then also when you welcomed the board, when you had your initial team meeting here. And so I think it's a real treat for the parents to get to know you, you know, on your own home court sometimes, too. So thank you for making the time to do that.
Thank you. Dr. Stern?
Well, first I want to know, Ms. Marcus, what did you dress up for as Halloween? And Dr. Chernus, what did you wear? Because I saw these pictures and I wasn't sure if I could make it up. So go ahead.
So, uh, the night of Halloween, I was Chewbacca. But when I came to, um, my, my initial costume was I was Superintendent Man and I had a Superman shirt under my suit.
And Ms. Marcus, did you?
Pass.
Oh, I saw you had a hat, like some black hat.
Uh, I, I'm getting, um, up in years and, uh, I, I don't enjoy, um, getting dressed up, uh, for Halloween. It's just not part of my, uh, and beside, I have to tell you.
Well, for the preschoolers, you had the witch's hat.
That's what it was. You were wearing a witch's hat when you were giving.
Oh, yeah, I did have that on. I would like to just say that for years I did, when I had lived, when we were on Elm Drive, I used to have so many kids come by my house and I loved it. And I, and I, and I loved being able to pass out candy and so on to all the kids in the neighborhood. And as the years have gone by, to say the least, it got to the point where nobody started to come to the door and I just have now turned off the lights because nobody comes to the house anymore. They all go.
To the south side.
Well, no, not so much the south side. They all go to the witch's house over on Walden in the corner. And, and by the way, they did use to do one right on the corner of Foothill. And, uh, my friend Tara Cucci used to do something, but she didn't do it this year. I would have dressed up, but unfortunately she didn't do it. So I didn't go and I missed it. I, I actually called up a friend, I said, is she doing it this year? And they said, no. So it took the little bit of the joy out of it. That, when you get to my age, that's what happens, all right?
All right.
I'm sorry.
That's good, thank you. Uh, what else? Could you just go back to the screen about the superintendent's, um, meeting? My wife was happy to be a part of that and very much enjoyed it. And I just would like to see it because, do, do you have that? Is that possible?
Sure.
Okay.
Colby, can you bring it up?
If it's too hard, it's okay, but, all right. Yeah, so she said, she came home and she said, it was really great because I could see that a lot of us had shared, um, uh, things that we liked and, and shared concerns. And so it made her, at least as a, as a member of this, realize that there is, there is a shared consensus about certain things. And, and it looks like there's a lot of things there, um, that people like and, and I appreciate that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Sabag.
Yeah, thank you for your report, Dr. Chernus. And I also wanted to, um, congratulate you on the superintendent advisory committee. I heard a lot of, uh, really positive feedback. And I, I think, I mean, I can't see that far from the screen, but I think it was where you set up, uh, different schools, like parents that were in the high school were on one table and parents that were in the middle school were one table and so on and so forth. And maybe about, you know, 10 parents or so at one table. And then you had an admin sitting at the table and they had questions or concerns and they all discussed it. And everybody has completely different views. And I think that is very eye-opening for people to hear other people's, you know, other parents' views. So thank you for doing that. I think that was, um, uh, and I don't know if we've ever done that before. Is that something that you've just decided to do? So that, that's very proactive. I really like that. And then in regards to Halloween, usually in Beverly Hills, um, the, uh, our Beverly Hills students, they do go to the witch's house and they go, um, you know, walking over there with families and everything. And we used to have a lot of problems. This year I heard it was very quiet. It was, um, perfect. It was organized and there were no issues. So I'm really grateful for that. And in regards to Little Women, I'd like to, you know, put another shout out there. I hope our community goes and watches, uh, Little Women at the Saltier Theater that we're just going to open. So it's a brand new theater and that's extremely excited, exciting. And I know that the students are really excited, uh, doing this. And I love Little Women. I don't know if anybody's seen it, but it's from, I don't know what year, but it's a beautiful, beautiful, um, you know, cast and, um, story. Uh, so thank you for your report. Thank you.
Okay, well, I get to say a few words now. I would like to compliment, I, I got over to, I was asked to be a judge at the Halloween carnival. And I have to tell you, I, as a senior member, I, I was, all these kids dressed up in costumes, I didn't know who they were. I mean, I had to ask the people on either side of me, who are they? Who are they? I really didn't know who everybody was. I got a few of them. I mean, but for the most part, there's so many new characters in their lives that they portray that I didn't even know who they were. So, but they were so adorable and they were so, the kids were so well behaved. It went so beautifully. And I have to tell you, I was at Horseman. I'm sure it was equally as good at, uh, El Rodeo, but I wasn't there, but I have to assume. Um, I, I, I just want to, uh, say one thing about, um, the, uh, the doggy days. I would love someday to have another dog, but, uh, unfortunately, you know, the responsibility when you get older to have a dog is something that takes a lot out of you. And, and boxers are too big for me to walk anymore. So you know that, uh, that's my favorite dog. I don't know if there were any boxers there that day, but I love boxers, so. And I want to just say that, um, I'm going to be going on Wednesday night to the, um, to the opening of Little Women for the thing. And I, everybody has already mentioned it, but I think it's so appropriate at this time that the Mrs. Marcus Meeks is going to, um, highlight the director of our performing arts drama department. So with that, Mr. Gallardian, how about Mrs. Marcus Meeks? Thank you for joining me. I'm looking forward to meeting with you and sharing the drama department at Beverly Hills High School. So thank you again.
Thank you for having me.
Before we get started, tell us a little bit about how you got here and what you've been doing up until before you came here, so we get to know a little bit about your background.
Um, I mean, I can start in college. I actually have a BA in English Literature. And then I, um, went from there into teaching pretty quickly. I taught at a high school called Oakmont High School in Roseville, California. While teaching, I earned my master's in theater production and design. And I was at Oakmont for 16 years. And then, uh, pandemic happened and it just felt better for our family to transition to San Diego, where I taught for a couple of years at, uh, a private school in La Jolla. And then this opportunity came up, so I moved my family again and we came here and I've been here for, this is my fourth year.
I have been very impressed by the productions that you have done so far. I am blown away. Mary Poppins, The Importance of Being Earnest, and the other one was, uh,
Diary of a Wimper.
The Play That Went Wrong.
Oh, that one.
I love that show. I, 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 I'm amazed at how you ran those shows and how you put it together. So tell me, how do you do it?
Um, I, I have a big imagination, I've been told. And so once I get a vision in my head, it's kind of hard to break away from it till I complete it. And since coming here, really how I've done it, uh, is the team that is, exists here, Thomas and our costumer Lark, um, and just the collaboration and what we've been able to accomplish together as a team, it just elevates the quality of the work that we're doing. I think that's a, a significant difference in what I'm able to achieve is that I'm not doing it alone. I'm not wearing all the hats anymore, as so many theater teachers do. And that's, that's huge.
Your students that you have in drama, if they were to pick an adjective, how would they describe you as their teacher in drama and so on?
I hope they think that I'm, uh, creative and intelligent. I know they think I'm kind and supportive. And, um, I hope they think I'm playful and fun too. That's kind of the spirit of a drama teacher, so.
Okay, well, you know, we're in the beautiful Saltor Auditorium here for the first day today. And I understand this is your first glimpse of it.
Yes.
Tell me what you think of it and what are we going to look forward to seeing in here?
Yes. Well, I was, I was distracted when we first got in here because I just wanted to imagine, as I said, that's kind of where my head goes. Um, the first show in here is Little Women, which opens in November. And we have students designing that, the set for that one this time, which is really exciting. And so I'm kind of trying to see it through their eyes and what they might be able to accomplish.
Let me ask you something. Have you, is there anything that you can remember, an incident in a show that happened that, oh, that the, it, it, all of a sudden things changed or that made a difference in the production or you had to, or is it something that it took care of itself?
That's kind of the magic of live theater is we do it because of those, oh, this is not going as planned. But the most recent problem was during, um, Mary Poppins. During the, uh, one of the shows, it caught on another scenic element and it fell over. And the whole thing came crashing down and it was behind the curtain, but very audibly, clearly something was going wrong. Um, and I was so impressed with how effectively the students managed. They continued, they, it even came up again today, ironically, that you're asking that question, where someone said, well, you just keep singing your song, you know, like, um, and she was, because she was in the middle of her song when it happened and she just kept singing her song.
Like nothing, it was part of the show.
Yep. And they rided it up. The crew was amazing. They were focused. They were calm. They, they did exactly what they needed to do to, to get back on track.
So, don't forget to go to see Little Women and support our high school drama department. I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised at the quality of our students and their performances. They are amazing. Okay, thank you so much. Um, okay, uh, the next item, uh, is the Beverly Hills High School Time Capsule being presented by Colby Gallardian. Colby? What do we got?
Quite exciting.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
Oh, my goodness.
You gonna bury someone?
Maya, gravestone.
Let me share my screen. Just a moment. There we go. Okay, so this is really, really, really cool. So while they were continuing construction on our front lawn at the Beverly Hills High School, um, our construction team let us know that they might have found something. So we were freaking out. And so, um, I had the pleasure to be joined with board member Sabag, um, and our construction team as we went to go see what this item was. So we came quite late at night and the construction team started digging away to figure out what, what they had found. And so it appears to be a mason jar that you can see right here. And, um, you can see in that photo, that's all we could see from the cement. And then as they started digging it out, we could start to make out what it was. And so on top of the jar, there's the jar once we got it out, we found this beautiful stone that has inscripted on it Knight's Bench. And so we had no idea this existed. And in all the photographs I had seen dating back to the 1980s, 60s and 50s, I had never seen this stone before. And so it had been completely buried underground. So we did some research. Here's what we found. We found out what the knights are. So this is a yearbook from 1939, the year in which, um, we discovered this was placed. And so the knights are a small student group organization. Back in the day, you had the Normans and you had the knights. And so I'm going to read this little passage from the yearbook. "It is the goal of every high school boy to become a knight because membership means they have achieved the highest honor in the school, that he has been chosen for dependability, for outstanding sportsmanship, for service, for scholastic attainments, and for citizenship throughout his school career." So this, it was very exclusive back in the day. And so as we continue to see what we found with, inside the mason jar was this. And this is Beverly Highlights, which was, which is our student-run newspaper. And if you take a look, what's really cool about it is this newspaper was written in 1939. And this was issue 14, which is incredible.
Oh, my God, I want to cry.
And so one of the stories that we found in the newspaper was actually about the Knight's Bench. I'll read a little portion of the newspaper, which is also here. Also, "New items to the Knights' organization and a surprise to many was the new Knight's Bench, forming a semi-circle about the flagpole. This bench was kindly donated to the organization by Mr. W.S. McFlary, father of Morgan McFlary, one of its members." Within the newspaper, we also found a small little letter, and I'll read that to you as well. Oh, yeah, thank you. It's a little hard to read. "In appreciation of the ideals of the knights and for furthering of their purpose in creating a standard of achievement among the student body, this bench has been given to the knights by Mr. W.X. McFlary in the month of June 1939. It is being dedicated on this day, June 14, 1939, in the present knight membership under the supervision of the faculty sponsors and before the assembled student body."
Careful.
So we have a little bit more insight into this bench and into this time capsule. So what was BHHS like in 1939? So based on images that we were able to find through the yearbook, this is what the high school looked like from an aerial view. More yearbook photos, you can see the beautiful grand lawn, our amazing band players. But more, most importantly, if you look at the third picture, you'll see that flagpole. And in specific, you'll see the Knight's Bench. So how are we going to incorporate our current students? So to be announced, in ASB, our ASB students are going to be working on a 2025 time capsule, a time capsule for today. And with the construction of our front lawn and with our amazing construction team, um, this time capsule will be placed underneath the grand lawn for the, our future Normans to one day find. And, um, and the Knight's Bench, this beautiful stone, will be preserved and placed in the, in the future grand lawn. Thank you.
Wow, that is unbelievable. I'm going to, um, step back and take a first impression of this because it really is, I wanted to cry. It was so touching. I, I honestly feel that this is something that should be placed somewhere that indicates that we found this while we were doing, though there's going to be one in 2025 going forward, I think this should be on display somewhere for everybody to see what we found, not to put it back in the ground and head away.
None of this will be placed in the ground.
I need this, need to be displayed and saved for all the future kids to see that go to the high school.
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't want to see this disappear, even the jar. I think, and don't touch it, don't wash it, don't anything. Leave it as it is because that's the way we found it. I, I do have a comment about the fact that all of this is, I was three years old when this happened. So I, I didn't live here then, of course, and I came here later. But I, I'm very, that this takes on a great deal of meaning to me because of my age. And I'm so thrilled that this is just very touching. And I want to thank you for, and to the construction, for recognizing that they had found something and preserved it as they were doing it. Because it could have been that they could have sledgehammered it and they didn't. And I think that that's an amazing thing. So I'm going to let the rest of the members of the board say a few words. Ms. Cavey?
This is so cool. I actually think this is so crazy that this was brought up today because so randomly yesterday, my best friend and I were talking about how cool it would be if we had a time capsule, like so random. This is so random. We were talking about it yesterday. And I, this was just put in front of me. I mean, this is crazy. I think this is so cool. This should 100% be displayed. I think it's amazing. Also, I love that you included ASB is going to be working on something, you know? Um, I know the ASB team will be really excited to hear about this and this is just incredible. And I love the entire presentation, so thank you for bringing us along.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Dr., Mr. Stewart?
Thank you. Obviously, great job. That was such a, I remember the night that you called me and texted me and said, oh, my God, I think we found something. Not to get into any history on this, but what do you think the theory is between them getting presented with this? getting presented with this bench and then it seems immediately burying it the same year? That's a, I wonder if there's any further research that we can do because obviously they didn't want to display it. They wanted it to be found by someone else. And also too, just thank goodness that we had this project and that we found it because it's things like this that that, you know, really give a throwback to, you know, how things were done. You know, I love that photo, you know, kind of inspires Judy's possible bringing uniforms back. But no, I really think that we'd love to display this somewhere that it can be cherished and looked at and photographed, but obviously protected too, so it's not just sat on and other things. But it's just an amazing moment for the entire city and the community, and it's absolutely spectacular.
Thank you. Yeah, so I believe the the stone was not buried. It was the jar that was buried underneath the stone. And then over time, the stone got buried. And I believe it was underneath the current flagpole that was there before.
Right in front of the.
Yeah, so.
But the grass had gradually grown over.
Got it, got it. Yeah, so the the stone became hidden as well.
Yeah, super cool. Love to hear both of your excitement about it, which I share. My only question is, is there a way that everybody from the class of 2025 might be able to participate? I know it's a lot of them, but it might be something cool for everyone to share together. Thank you for your, you know, TLC on this.
They might decide to use something and everybody could leave something that has meaning to them or some memento.
Yeah.
But that's for the ASB and the student body to decide.
To decide, exactly. Thank you for sharing. This is super cool.
Dr. Stern.
This is super cool. I mean, of the websites I troll, sometimes I go to ones where people who have the metal detector and they go to old places and old farms and they find things and that's right up there. So that's really cool. Can you tell us again where you found it? Where was the site?
It was right in front of the flagpole, buried.
And and how far down?
So like Colby mentioned, the actual stone was on the surface level, but over time just the dirt and grass just kind of grew over it. And then attached to the underneath side of the stone was the cap for the jar. So it was actually attached to the bottom of the stone.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sabog.
Shout out to Ms. Sabog, who was there with me.
This i- is super exciting. So we were really excited because when we got there, you didn't dig it out yet. So I guess Will or the contractor saw that there was some glass there and noticed, wow, this is a time capsule. This somebody buried this for others to see. So they buried it in 1939, 86 years ago. And I kind of did a little bit of research. And thank you so much, Colby, for your research. I'm really in awe of what you did. I'm so happy you did that. And I just looked, last time we renovated, the front lawn was in 1939. So what happened was is they renovated and they decided to bury this under, I guess it was close to the flagpole or under the flagpole. So and then I start thinking backwards because I love, love history. And whenever I I see something in history, you kind of imagine you were there. This was World War II. Like this was when Hitler, you know, Nazi Germany was in power and it was just a very complex time. And then when we dug up or when when the contractors dug up the jar, we didn't know what to expect. So you said there was some water in it. And so then we saw the water and it is just such an exciting moment to see what exactly is happening. What what have what did we find? What would they bury? You know, so we were like, is there, are there coins? Are there pictures?
I'm not going to lie, I was hoping there was something more.
We were, we were kind of just a tad disappointed because it was just like a newspaper. And then we didn't see the newspaper because it was it was curled up, right? And then it had to be a little bit open in order to see what it was. And then we're like, oh, my gosh, this is Beverly Hills newspaper in 1939, which we don't do anymore.
Written by students at the time, yeah.
Wow, so then we took it out and then and then we saw, when did we, when did you see the the concrete, the the stone? It was after, right, Colby? We saw it after.
No, no, we we saw the stone and that's what gave us the hint.
But we didn't know what was written on it, right?
And we didn't know what was written in. We didn't know what was underneath until.
We didn't know what was underneath and we didn't know what was written on it. So it was a very exciting discovery and thank you. Thank you for presenting this. I think we are so lucky to have something like this and to just see. And also, this happened in El Rodeo, right? Because of the flood? There was some flood over there.
Yeah, I can talk about that as well. So El Rodeo, while they were getting ready to do the field, the turf, the soccer field, when our construction team was digging up, we found teacups, forks, spoons, knives, and we didn't know like how it got here. And so through research, we worked with the Beverly Hills Historical Society, and we determined that that was artifacts from the Great Flood many, many, many years ago. And so that was another really cool artifact we found through our construction program.
This is amazing. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I didn't expect that. That was great.
Thank you.
We've arrived at the agenda hearing period. I just want to remind everybody that the comments to be respectful and relevant to the district business. Personal attacks, inappropriate language, and discussing a specific employee or employees is not or students is not permitted. At this time, I have a request. I'm going to call on Candace Lindsay. Candace, are you on Zoom? I see the K. I don't know if that's Candace, are you there?
The lower one, the cartoonist.
Yeah, okay, Candace? Yes, hi, Candace. I hear you're there. Are you seating time?
Yes, hi.
Are you seating time to Zola Marcheriki?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Ms. Zola Marcheriki, you ready for a public comment?
I am.
Thank you. And you have six minutes because you've been given extra time, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's an idiom that asks, how do you boil a frog? If you drop a frog in into hot water, it would jump out right away. But if you gradually turn up the temperature, by the time the water is boiling, it is too late for the frog to get out. They have been lulled into their own demise. I'm here again today because this is what's happening now in Beverly Hills and in our district. Minority students and parents are asking to be recognized, acknowledged, and respected. Instead, our kids are facing blatant racism, bullying, and erasure. It didn't start out like this. Harassment was an amalgam of religions and races, and the kids got along. And by BV, there were increased incidents of racial hate, bigotry, intimidation, and racial slurs directed at Black and Latin Latino kids. And then by BHHS, it's pervasive. Seven Black students came before this board last year and went on record that they have heard the N-word used so often, they are now accustomed to it. They were also not believed. They were told it didn't happen, admins insinuated they were lying, and no action was taken to change the behavior or discipline the student aggressors. That's how you boil a frog. You normalize hate and bigotry and say things like, it's just kids playing. All kids are mean. We hear the M-word in rap music all the time. Why can't we say it? And through all this, all our kids light lights get dimmer. Bigotry does not just hurt the target, it hurts the entire community. Last week's board meeting was a mixed bag, huh? I want to say thank you to Russell, Amanda, and Mrs. Marcus for approving a resolution to recognize all the federally mandated affinity months. All the months put before the board are the law. The two board members spoke against it and voted no, directly contradicted the law. It was indeed lawless. Board members are supposed to be impartial. How can you look out for what's best for our kids if you do not respect the rule of law? Judy said she was opposed to the affinity months.
Please, no names.
I'm I'm quoting what she said, and it's within my rights under the Brown Act for me to speak about things that are done in your public capacities. You guys ran for public office, so you can be criticized. Judy said she was opposed to the affinity months resolution because it favored one group over another. She also said out loud, I don't see European American Heritage Month here. The ignorance of this comment is staggering. For one, and there's a million things I can say about the comments, there is no federally recognized month for European heritage. The months that were put before the board went through a rigorous process of going through Congress and the Senate and ultimately being approved by the President of the United States and made federal law. If you are advocating for White People's Month, Judy, you should start with your local congressman. As far as recognizing one group over another, this board didn't have a problem doing that when they enacted the antisemitism resolution in August. I support any and all efforts to eradicate antisemitism, as Sigali specifically said at that time, this does not mean that we cannot also recognize other groups. Yet, last week, when it was time to recognize other groups, both Sigali and Judy voted no, using almost the exact opposite logic of what was used for the antisemitism resolution to deny and disrespect every other group but your own. Sigali's comment was that the antisemitism resolution was enacted because there was a problem in the classroom. What problem in the classroom? The only examples of antisemitism this school and this district has called to our attention as parents came from people outside of Beverly Hills and the community. Persian Jewish students are the majority in our district. And it is true and and demoralizing that Jewish people are being harmed all over the world. This school board was not elected to address world problems. Your role and jobs are to address what is happening in our schools. Seven Black students testified about the almost, there's a problem in the hallways, there's a problem in the schools, there's a problem in the district, there's a problem in the city, there's a problem in this boardroom. I care for my children. I care about your children. Last week's two no votes showed that some of you only care about things that affect you. I refuse to let my kids grow up in a district in a city where they are devalued and mistreated. And maybe when every Black person removes their kids from this district and every Latin person removes their kids from this district, maybe you'll be happy, but maybe then you'll do the right thing. I think Elizabeth Warren said, when all is said and done, your shame will remain. When you run again, your shame will remain. Black lives matter. I'm going to say it again, Black lives matter. We as parents will not stop until the admins and board of BH USC protect all kids from bigotry. We will continue coming here every week and will start to use our time and money to go down to the courthouse to enjoin or compel you to do your jobs. We are not the enemy, but you cannot leave our kids unprotected. We want you to succeed. Your success is our success. Your failure failures hurt our students, all of them. I beg you to do the right thing, to work with us as parents, that you as leaders. We will keep chipping away at the bad behavior until this district is one that we can all be proud of. We will not give up. Our kids will not be boiled like frogs. There's another idiom that asks, how do you eat an elephant? The assumption being that the elephant is too big and too mighty to take on. Little by little, I know we can achieve the right thing for this district. I know we can protect all students. So how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call now on Amber McLinn. Is Amber McLinn here? Okay, Amber, do you cede your time to Victoria Tate? Thank you. I will call on Victoria Tate now. You have six minutes, Victoria.
Okay. Thank you, board members Rochelle Marcus, Amanda Stern, and Russell Stewart for your yes votes, which passed Resolution 2025-2026-07, the recognition of multiple heritage months. These recorded board meetings are public record. And Judy Manasshere and Sigali Sabog, you voted no and made public comments that will be a consequence to this district for years to come. Long before Russell or Sigali ever stepped foot on this board, Judy, you were made aware of the racism that existed within Beverly Hills Unified School District. I'm going to have to reclaim my time if you do that.
Okay, I just want, please.
You were made aware of the racism that existed within this district. You told parents and the press, no racism exists, while privately smiling in the faces of Black mothers, saying you wish there was a way to implement a zero tolerance policy or an all-inclusive resolution that would be made for every child to feel included and safe. Then, when said resolution came before you, you voted no. Not only did you vote no, but you brought up an ideology or initiative that is widely known and heavily heavily advocated for by former Ku Klux Klan Grand Resort David Duke. European Heritage Month does not exist. It is federally recognized month, it's not a federally recognized month or observance. But this is a fact, you can look it up, because I'm from the great state of Louisiana. I know my facts and I know my history. Okay? But KKK leader David Duke pushed for it to become federally recognized throughout his entire tenure as a Republican mayor member of the House of Representatives for the state of Louisiana from 1989 to 1992, and it failed. I don't want to hear that you didn't know about David Duke or his very public failed efforts to push for his racially driven European Heritage Month. Ignorance is not an excuse counsel, and you of all people know better. You have a due diligence owed to this district and to these children to do your research before you get on that mic and put your foot in your mouth and write this district a check that you are not prepared to cash. I am a firm believer that the apology needs to be as loud, if not louder, than the disrespect. For a board that boasts about transparency, Dr. Chernus, you failed to tell this district and the parents that on October 23, 2025, the California Department of Education report, which states, the CDE finds that there were sufficient material findings of facts supported by substantial evidence to sustain the allegation of race-based bullying and the creation of a racial hostile environment within Beverly Hills Unified School District. Where was that? Now there's silence. And I'm going to also call out the statements made by Sigali on October 21, 2025, when you said, the other parents, they get things done because they come to us and they ask us nicely. There's partnership. You yourself are a proclaimed white woman. You sit here and posture yourself in whiteness and you're going to say, you you don't see the optics of this? How should we ask you as Black parents to have a school environment where our children are not called nigger? Should, do I have to beg? Oh, please, master, don't call our children negroes. How? Please tell us the proper way that you, as a white woman, want us, people of color, to ask you to have an environment where our children are not called the N-word. Then you stated, we're keeping all this to the classroom, things that happen in class. And that same California Department of Education report, one of the things that got you dinged on racism is because a student felt so comfortable in this district where he stood up and pointed to four children of color, one of them being my daughter, and called them the nigger in front of class. This is part of the reason I took my daughter out this district. We live where she could be able to walk across the street, where my tax dollars go to this city, but she can't go. Because of that and other traumatic experiences that happened to her in the classroom, where other children felt comfortable enough to do that. You are not there when we get our children coming home crying about this. You're not there when our children are getting step-by-step instructions on how to go and kill themselves because they're Black. You were not there for that. Like I said, these are public recordings, and long after you guys are not on this board, the things that you say and do will have a consequence. And please note, that CDE report and Zola saying, oh, eat a single elephant one at a time, and it come back, I'm telling you right now, it's not an if, it's going to be a lawsuit. Baby, this this is a lawsuit. Please prepare to write that check.
Thank you. We have another comment, but it has to do with the consent calendar. So I'm going to, if there's anything that anybody wanted to pull on the consent, I know we're pulling 10. we're pulling 10B1A, and that's one of them. Is there anybody else pulling anything on the consent calendar?
Well, I'm just trying to understand, wouldn't we pull 10B1 as a whole? Would it be 10B1?
Okay, all right, 10B1, okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
I just, 10B1, okay?
Can we?
What did you want to pull, Ms. Sabag?
I wanted to discuss D.
You want to discuss E?
Okay.
And what else?
D and David, D as in David.
B, David and David and E, right? In addition? So we're gonna?
I think we just that F is not on the agenda, right?
No, that's off, that won't be, that's a fringe, no.
Okay, got it. No, it's back on, right?
Okay, I will call for a motion.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
What?
10F, F like Frank, is still on.
Oh, do you want to?
Chrissy, did you say it's off the agenda?
No.
Oh, it's on? Okay, so I'd like to discuss that one.
Which one?
I think at one point we were told it was off.
Yeah.
All right, I have some information on that, we'll talk about that, okay? Okay, so I'm gonna call for a motion to, and then we have a comment. I'm calling for a motion to approve the consent calendar minus 10B1, D, E, and F. Do I have a motion?
No, I'm sorry.
One more thing.
B, I think you missed B in your motion.
No, I said B, 10B1.
Okay.
I said 10B1.
Got it.
Thank you.
And G?
And D, E, and F.
And G, I know we had questions on it, and is it taken off, the question that we had, Dr. Chernus, in regards to the?
166.
Two of them were taken off. Are you talking about the?
They were taken off the ratification? Okay, then if they're taken off, then that's fine.
Okay.
So we're saying B, D, E, and F?
We're doing 10B1, D, E, and F.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
10B2 as well.
One and two, just do one and two.
Oh, you want one and, 10B1 and two, okay.
Okay. I hereby make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items 10B1, 10B2, D, E, and F.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Okay, so, can I call for the question? Are those in favor of the motion to approve the consent calendar without those items?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, vote of five and oh, and provisional one from Ms. Cave. Okay, now, I make a mo, can we have a motion to?
Yes. I make a motion to approve item 10B1.
Thank you, Mrs. Manassari. And do I have a second? I'll make the second, okay? Okay, so, and now, anybody who pulled that wants to make a comment? This is, as you call, the item?
Oh, there's public comments.
Public, oh, yes, I'm sorry. At this time, is Daniel Lifshitz on the screen or in the room?
I'm on the screen.
Thank you so much, Daniel, and then you're ceding your six, three minutes to your, I guess it's your wife, Kim, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Kim, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. You are ready to proceed when you're ready. Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. In addition to speaking at this meeting, I have submitted these remarks for inclusion in the minutes as I want to ensure there is a written record of what transpired here tonight. I'll start with some background that is, I will note, completely allowable under the First Amendment, the Brown Act, and BHUSD bylaws. On December 19, 2024, the Board of Trustees of the Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District voted unanimously to place seven administrators on paid administrative leave. This group included the district superintendent, deputy superintendent, two executive directors, a director, and the principal. On January 23, 2025, the Board of Trustees voted unanimously to bring five of those seven administrators back. Who were the two the Board did not reinstate? Superintendent Dr. Alex Chernus and Deputy Superintendent for Human Resources Dr. Isaac Gates. On April 15, 2025, Dr. Chernus was hired as superintendent for the Beverly Hills Unified School District. Dr. Gates sat at the front of the room during that meeting rooting for his old boss. Tonight, Dr. Chernus is attempting to hire Dr. Gates as Executive Director of Personnel Services for BHUSD, thus ending his nearly year-long paid administrative leave at Pyl USD, getting the band back together. When your band has a reunion tour, you gotta play the hits. So what are some of the greatest hits of Dr. Gates' tenure as Dr. Chernus' deputy? There's Mika Linden VPyl USD filed on November 4, 2024, alleging breach of employment contract, breach of duty of good faith and fair dealing, intentional infliction of emotional distress and constructive discharge. Status settled for $300,000 of the district's and taxpayers' money. Then we have Scott VPyl USD filed on June 12, 2025, alleging breach of employment contract, breach of duty of good faith and fair dealing, intentional infliction of emotional distress and violation of Labor Code subsection 1102.5, which covers whistleblowing. Status is ongoing. And who could forget Craig VPyl USD filed on July 24, 2025, alleging breach of employment contract, breach of duty of good faith and fair dealing, and intentional infliction of emotional distress. Status, once again, ongoing. What, and I cannot stress this enough, are you trying to pull? The facts of the cases vary, but one common thread is the cultivation of an environment rife with suspicion, fear, and retaliation in which teachers and staff felt unsupported and unsafe. An environment in which their contracts were violated and they were targeted, harassed, and even punished for reporting misconduct. The other common thread is the superintendent and his trustee deputy. The position of Executive Director of Personal Services is a powerful one. The responsibilities of this individual include overseeing union negotiations, ensuring labor law compliance, handling workplace complaints and investigation to mitigate district liability. I have a note here to pause for laughter. And employee relations. This position also pays somewhere in the neighborhood of a quarter of a million dollars per year. During the search for a new BHUSD superintendent and in meeting after meeting since, board members and Dr. Chernus have acknowledged how vitally important transparency is to the community. So why, in one fell swoop, has the district opted to blow up every inch of progress made towards earning our trust? I read each board meeting agenda from top to bottom, including attachments as soon as it's distributed. I've also been looking out for this particular individual's name for months, and still, I almost missed it. I almost missed it because it was put on the certificated personnel report where it was tucked away to be voted on as part of the consent calendar, which is typically reserved for non-controversial items. Conduct like this is anything but transparent, and yet I and so many other parents are immediately able to see right through it. Is there really not one single person in the state of California who is qualified to fill this position and does not have multiple lawsuits hanging over their head that arose from conduct directly related to their prospective duties in BHUSD? Did you even check? How many executive-level managers fresh off administrative leave does BHUSD plan to hire before we get sick of being a laughingstock? How many qualified, effective, and well-liked teachers and staff will BHUSD hemorrhage before it starts to affect the all-important test scores? How many lawsuits will BHUSD need to pay to settle before the money runs dry and our students start to suffer, thus paving the way for privatization? Can you all just please, please act like normal adults and do your jobs instead of committing unforced error after unforced error and manufacturing cloak-and-dagger scandals out of thin air? And to the board members who plan to rubber-stamp this latest insult to our collective intelligence, what are you getting out of this? Whatever you were promised in exchange for selling out the district you swore enough to serve, I hope it was worth shredding any respect or credibility you might have enjoyed for the rest of what is hopefully your final term on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lifshitz. Okay. Okay, on this item, let's go around and see if there's any comments. We're talking about item 10B1. Let's start with Ms. Cave. Is anybody that wanted to speak to this? Okay, Dr. Stern.
Okay. I recall meeting Mr. Gates some time ago, and informally, I confirmed that I liked him, and I do like him. This was some time ago. It was not brought further to my attention readily. Now, Mr. Gates will be accepted into BHUSD, so actions, my actions will not alter that. But I am abstaining because the announcement of his appointment after much time transpired was unusually obscured and difficult to find in this agenda, and I was not the only person who found this to be true. Let me clarify, my choice to abstain has little to do with the individual in question and more to do with what felt like a bungled hiring process that faced, that lacked the usual transparency and due diligence that is required for such a high-level hire. Thank you.
I have a question. Is a board member allowed to abstain for no particular reason?
I'm not an expert on the Brown Act, but, so I don't know. I will say this position was posted on Edjoin for over a month, and this is the proper format to approve all personnel that are not under contract. They're on the personnel report, so this is the proper way to do it, and I did confirm that today with counsel.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Chernus.
Can I make just a small?
Okay, I'm gonna go around if someone else wants to. Mr. Stewart?
I'm gonna clarify some reality to Ms. Stern's comment, which I am still incredibly confused at. We met Mr. Gates several months ago. We had an extensive interview with him. He presented, you know, extensive background documents. I did my research. I'm sorry, no one else on the Board seemed to have done the same thing. This was not a surprise at all. We've been in constant communication with Mr. Gates. We did, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, but we did have a vote on this in.
Don't go into detail.
Well, I mean, I'm not gonna get into the vote, but yes, I mean, this was discussed, it was agreed upon. We have been in touch with Mr. Gates four months. He's had some personal things that he's been dealing with. I'm not gonna air out his own personal things, but he's had some, you know, some things that he has overcome, and now he is on board from what we had agreed upon. So this whole cloak and dagger, or that someone on this board was not informed properly, or now more salacious garbage, and I'm gonna say that directly, and I hope that you're still watching at home, because every single time that we hear certain people speak, it's always just attack, 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 like we're just doing this blindfolded. Mr. Gates is an incredible human being. We vetted him thoroughly. He's been attacked in his own district, just like Dr. Chernus was, and now Dr. Chernus is our superintendent, and by the way, he's doing an incredible job. Our district is showing incredible turnaround across the board. And if anyone has an argument with that, they're obviously not looking at the actual facts. So for those that want to attack Mr. Gates, or for a member of our Board up here that wants to play ignorant and say, "I didn't have enough information, I don't even know what I voted for," that is absolutely ridiculous, and it just shows that there are people up here that actually want to do their job, and there's others up here that are just playing this for fun. And I'm really getting upset because I am watching, week after week after week, getting attacked across the board up here, where we are working our butt off for the community, for the parents, and especially for the students. And this man is fantastic, and if somebody wants to bring up evidence that's not some makeshift website like I've already seen some people make about me, by the way, and I do see you too, trust me, that it is time to actually start being professionals up here and doing our job properly.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Manassari, did you wish to say?
Yes, thank you, President Marcus. Trustee Stern, I would like to express my disappointment in you as a colleague and as a friend. We sit next to one another during closed session, and I will elaborate on the point that you made yourself about closed session, which is that we did meet and interview Dr. Gates at length. You were sitting next to me, and you got up to take a work call.
I remember that, I confirmed that I liked him, and I did.
Yes.
I haven't heard anything about the gentleman for the last?
Thank you, I appreciate the confirmation. Okay? And I said, you got up and you said, "Dr. Gates, you have my support, you have my vote, I'm gonna take this call." I stopped you, Mandy, and I said, "Mandy, what are you doing?" And you said, "No, I like him." And I said, "Okay, take your work call, I'm gonna keep talking to him."
And then I didn't hear anything after that.
And I did, but you gave your vote.
And this agenda item absolutely was not where it was supposed to be. It was obscured in a very unusual place.
It's my time, it's my time. I didn't interrupt you.
When something feels strange, it usually is.
I'm sorry? I don't, hold on, ladies. I'll talk after you're done. Just because you didn't follow up on it and didn't take the time to care, or maybe you forgot about it, didn't mean that we did not have a collective unanimous meeting of the minds as a board. And if you were then caught off guard that in your mind, this came out of nowhere, I accept that as your experience, but it's not based on an overall fact, which is that the gentleman faced his own health matter, and we waited for him. And that's what happened, and so time passed. Dr. Seaman was kind enough to jump into the position, generous enough to do that for him, for us, to bear the weight in the meantime, and then this gentleman was clear to come to us. And what hurts about it is that you are more willing to put yourself on the outside of this board than to take the time and to take the responsibility for your own actions in approving of him at that time. That's what disappoints me, and I keep getting the impression that some people from the community reach out to you, and instead of saying, "You know what, give me a minute, let me get back to you."
You don't know what happened, and the confusion that was shared with another person in this room, that it was obvious, it was very strange, that it wasn't patent.
I will, I will, hold on.
But I respect your comments, thank you.
I'm just trying to communicate to you my experience with this, and I'm always very plain and very straightforward with you. I hold nothing back from you nor from our community. But this gentleman was properly vetted, we went through the normal course. I would say that we have hired another director position in recent weeks, which none of us even met.
I was gonna bring that up.
For the food service, he's not cabinet level, he's a director level.
This is not a cabinet-level position.
And if you recall, I spearheaded that any employee that is below an assistant superintendent position should not be awarded a multi-year contract, but would be an at-will employee year over year who could be terminated at our will.
This is a director-level position.
Which is no different than, for example, the food services.
We just hired a food service director on the personnel report as well. The Board did not meet that person nor vet him.
I don't even know what he looks like, but I saw his resume and I did my evaluation.
The bottom line is, it's my recommendation that the principal has the ability to hire directors, and the Board vets and hires the superintendent and any other contractual employee like assistant superintendent. This is the exact way to hire management, and so if there's a different direction, then we wouldn't need that.
Okay, Dr. Stern, do you want to say anything?
No, I'm just, I'm gonna go to Mandy and come back to you, okay?
Okay, Mrs. Sabag?
So I'm very confused of what's going on here. I don't even know why we're discussing this. We met Dr. Gates, I think it was like five months ago, or how long ago was it, Dr. Chernus? Around five months ago. We, as a Board, first of all, do not have to even vote to hire him in. He's a director position. Now, I have to say something, and it's really awful and sad that I have to say this. I feel, I feel for you, Dr. Stern, I have to tell you something. I really feel for you, because as a board member, I don't have anybody calling me and telling me anything. The only thing that people in regards to what we're doing as governance, I'm taking the Masters of Governance, which is eight hours each course, and there are five, I've taken the Ethics, I've taken the Brown Act, and I think I am very equipped of what we're doing here. And if we were doing something that was not correct, I would be the first one to say it. The community does not know. The only people I hear from is the community, by the community members telling me what's going on, you know, like, let's say there's an issue here, or there's an issue there, and there is absolutely antisemitism in the classroom that has stopped, thanks to our antisemitism resolution. It's in the classroom, okay? For anybody not to know that, they cannot come up here and judge. And I'm not a, well, I don't even want to get into that. But anyways, my point is, is that this man was vetted. We saw him, it didn't even have to happen that way. I have spoken to him for hours, because I care very much of who is gonna come on board with us. He became ill, and we became ill, and we waited, and Dr. Seaman was so amazing that he took that upon himself, and we asked him if he could do it, and he said yes. And he did it, and it was, it was too much. And we waited for Dr. Gates. We saw everything that he has done before. We put it out there. I even said, "Let's look for somebody else." You know, what is happening? 'Cause we do need somebody. But he was ready to come and work, and I even spoke to him after that. You can speak to anybody you want, but the thing that I feel bad is that the community members are getting involved with your governance, with what you're doing as a trustee.
But you're assuming my thoughts tonight are because of, and there are a lot of people who are upset, but that's not why I'm here.
I'm telling you, I'm very in tuned, and I can see that it is not a coincidence that people are speaking and that you're repeating their words. It's not a coincidence, and it's sad. So, I suggest...
So, we can ask a Board member in this room that I had a conversation, that I was very upset about this. So, you can say it's because of people who called me, but I have my own thoughts about things. But that's okay. I'm happy to have him.
I call for the vote, ladies. Let's go. Enough mumbo jumbo and nonsense, and Mrs. Marcus, go. Enough.
I have not had a chance. I have to say that this is, I wanna make this point clear. This position is not a con, it's not for three years. It's till the end.
Not an appointment.
It's just, and it's only until June 30th, at which time we will be able to have gotten some idea of whether this is a person that we want to continue with. I think we need to, we've got to give him a chance. We haven't given him that chance yet, and he's been in many situations. He seems to be very, very capable. I know that there's some bad stuff that has happened in the past, but I for one wanna remember that this is not a three-year contract. It's going until July 1st, and at that point, we will make a decision, and he will know, and we will know if he's the right person for us. And that's what I think is unfortunate that we're not doing. So, I'd like to now call for the question. Please, and I'll start with Ms. Cave.
And Mrs. Marcus, can someone just abstain for no reason?
Well, I was always under the impression you can only abstain for monetary...
Yeah, if there's a conflict of interest.
Yeah, conflict of interest, but I don't know that for sure.
Well, I mean, I think Dr. Stern should take a vote, one way or another.
Okay, well, we're gonna, oh, well, let's see what happens, okay? Okay. Ms. Cave.
I vote yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Stern?
Abstain.
No, you can abstain.
Well...
You have no basis for your abstention.
I do, because I didn't have enough information. For example, I did not know that his term ends in July. No one told me that.
That's...
No one told me that.
Can I tell you, we're voting on the Personnel Report. We're not voting on Dr. Gates. The community needs to understand.
Yeah, we're voting on, that's right.
This whole conversation was not necessary. We're voting on the Personnel Report.
And you cannot abstain from the Personnel Report. Take a vote.
Yes, he's on, he's on the Personnel Report, but we're voting on the Personnel Report, the whole report.
We're voting on the certificated Personnel Report, okay? All right, Dr. Stern?
Until I hear otherwise, I will abstain. Thank you.
Okay, I can't, all right, and Mrs. Sabag?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes. Okay, so it passes four and zero with one vote, and one abstention. Four, one, and Mrs. Cave's student preferential vote. Okay, now we also have item number 10A, I mean, 10B2, the Classified Personnel Report. And who drew that and took that out? Could they please speak to that quickly?
Yes, so I would like to take out...
Should I put a motion on the floor?
Yes.
No, we don't have a motion. I'm gonna need a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve of, on the consent calendar, the Classified Personnel Report minus the last five items pertaining to, no, excuse me, the four items pertaining to school security.
Can you repeat that motion again, please?
Yes, I hereby make a motion to approve item 10B2, Classified Personnel Report, without the school's security mentioned on page 42, lines 95 through 105.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Mrs. Manichari, and Dr. Stern is a second, and we're pulling out the security portion of that. Is there any comment about that then, Mrs. Sabag? Does that meet what you wanted to accomplish?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'll call for the motion. All those in favor of the approval of the special of the classified personnel without items 95 through 105, please say yes. Ms. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Manichari?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Stern?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sabag?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. So it's five and oh with one preferential vote. Okay, going on now. I'd like to get a motion, oh no, we've approved the, oh no, we've got item D, Approval of TAD Health Third-Party Software Service for Claims Through the Children's and Youth Behavior Health Initiative. I need a motion to approve that.
I so move.
Thank you, Mrs. Manichari, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. All those who pulled that, wanna make a comment or ask a question?
Yes. Here, let me get to it. That's 10D, right, Mrs. Marcus?
Yes, 10D.
Okay. So, I thank you, whoever wrote in the Q and A and the explanation. A couple questions I just wanted to clarify. Who will answer these questions? Ben? Let me just bring out the Q and A. Okay, for the community, can you just explain, and then I will go over what the part, like, basically, we're hiring a firm in order to get reimbursed by the government for certain...
Yeah, so the state has committed $4 billion to support mental health services in the school setting, California Youth Behavior Health Initiative. We have joined Cohort Four, and this contract is with a third-party vendor that provides us a platform so we can easily collect information regarding the services we're providing, and then submit claims for reimbursement to the state.
Okay, and you said this is the first time that we are eligible for this?
So, as a part of Cohort Four, we were able to start making claims this semester. Now that we're finally getting this contract lined up, we are actually able to backdate some of our claims and reimbursements for services that we've provided since the first day of school.
Oh, okay, so we're able to backdate?
Yep.
And, so, the only thing is that it was written in here, the full financial opportunity this provides the district is yet to be calculated. So that kind of concerned me, so I don't know...
It's just unclear how large the reimbursement from the state is gonna be. As we start to go through our claims and see exactly, exactly how many services are eligible and are not, we'll have a better idea. Some districts across the state that are in Cohorts One, Two, or Three have submitted claims that are being rejected, or whether it's because the service isn't actually aligned with the approved fee schedule, or if it's just the process that they're using. All of those are reasons. Our hope is that TAD Health's platform is gonna make it really easy for us to make those contributions.
So, you saw, I think you said Santa Monica or Culver City?
So, the two other school districts in our Selpa are also using TAD Health. Santa Monica has just recently completed their contract. Culver City's working through the process with them still.
And they have received the reimbursement, like, it's worked for them, I'm assuming?
Santa Monica's just recently completed their contract.
Okay, and then, do we have to do a two-year contract, or can we try it for a year and see how it works?
Well, if we, we don't, we don't have to make any claims. We can make no claims, and that's, and that doesn't cost us any money.
Oh, and then we don't need to pay them, but we need to give them a deposit of $3,000?
Correct, and that, that money was given to us by the County Office of Education, Laco, through our capacity grant. So, the money already set aside that was given to us.
They're encouraging us. So, they're encouraging us to use this service?
Correct.
And then they receive a percentage of whatever we receive?
Correct, so they're, they're, they have a benefit in making sure that it's working for us.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions, or it's pretty much understood? Okay.
All right, call for the question. All those in favor of...
Thank you, Ben.
Item D, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, passes five and oh.
Great socks, Ben.
Six with that provisional. Okay, now they wanna pull letter E, Approval of a Completion of the Contract with LA High Tech Energy Enterprises to Approve Security Devices Installation at the Three School Sites. I'm asking for a motion.
I hereby move to approve item E.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern.
Okay, I get a motion, and it was moved and approved by, a motion to approve this
with Judy Manichari, I mean, Mrs. Manichari and Dr. Stern. I'd just like to say that this is already something that's been completed, right, Mr. Carrot? Is there any reason that this should be a concern? That's all I wanted to know.
No concern. After they completed the work, we went through and verified all the locations with Brian Damavati, who's helped us, who helped us put the scope together. All the cameras work, all the detectors work, and the P A system works.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to make a comment on this?
Yeah, I wanted to know, so basically, it's also the vaping systems, that's what we're paying for, and is it installed in BV? Because I think in the Q and A, it's not, but did we pay for it to be installed in BV?
No.
Are we going to do it in BV?
It's not on a current project, but we could, we could visit that.
I thought we were going to do that. Is, so we never voted on something like that?
Well, this is only for the approval of the one that we did approve, so...
Yeah, it says for three campuses.
If we wanted to do something additional to that, we have to bring it in.
So, the three campus reference is mostly for the camera, I mean, yeah, for the security cameras.
Okay.
The vape and the P A system was mostly at the high school.
So, can I ask the Board if everybody's interested in getting estimate for the systems to be installed in BVMS bathrooms? I think we need it. I know we need it.
I don't think we can do that, and that's, we can never install...
Not the camera, I'm sorry. The, the detectors.
The vape detectors?
The vaping detectors.
The camera outside the bathroom, right?
We could get, we could definitely get...
The cameras are there to tell you who just was in there and came out, based on the release.
We can get pricing for vape detectors at the middle school.
So, can we do the same that we have done in the high school with the camera and the detectors?
The cameras are already at BV, for the most part. There's a lot of coverage there, but we'll get vape detectors.
Like, right in front, like, in the back, outside of the bathroom?
I believe each entrance to, I'll double check, but each entrance...
But there are no detectors inside the bathrooms?
No.
Okay, well, I think that's something that we should put on the agenda for the next time.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I, I will...
But maybe before we put it on the agenda, can we give a directive to will to get pricing?
Well, to find out about the pricing.
Yeah, get pricing.
For two weeks, yes, thank you.
Okay, I know we don't put it in all of them. We just put it in, we didn't do all the high school bathrooms.
We did, all of them.
Every high school bathroom?
Yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. When I saw all three schools, I assumed it was Moreno, the high school, and BVMS.
Right.
And so that's why I'm unclear on why you're asking for a proposal with respect to BVMS. Did I miss something? I'm sorry.
He said, he said that there's no detection, detectors in BVMS, and I thought there were, and I don't know how we missed that.
Okay, but then, in the description, it says to provide security devices installation at three school sites.
Yeah, for the cameras.
For the, got you.
For the cameras, and I think it, just El Rodeo already had it.
Yes.
So, it's basically the high school, the middle school, and the forest man.
And Horace Mann, just in the theater.
Different device.
It is a different device.
I'm with you, thank you. Thank you, sorry.
Yes, I'll get quotes for vape detectors.
But if we can look into that, I think that might be something to look into.
So, sorry, a sound goes off if it detects it, or does it send it?
It alerts the Command Center. I'm not sure it gives an audible alarm in the restroom.
Okay.
He's not there, sorry.
Okay, call for the question. All those in favor of the item, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, passes five and oh and one provisional. Thank you. Okay, the call for a motion for the approval of the Beverly Hills High School out-of-country trip to Beverly Hills French Students and French Club, March 25th through April 2nd, to Paris and Normandy and the Loire Valley in France. And I know that that was pulled. I don't know. I need a motion, but I'd like to say something. From what I gather, and this is something that I've heard now, and you could correct me, Dr. Turnus, I or Dr. Seaman, that the teacher who was willing to do this did not realize the magnitude of this particular effort, and she has since, I understand, not, if the parents wanna do it, that's one thing, but it requires so much preliminary work and so on, that I don't think that the teacher who was gonna do it, or was willing to look into it, is so interested now. I don't know if that's true or not, but...
As of Sunday, November 2nd, in an email exchange between me and Principal Sorakza, we...
At one time?
Yeah, at 2:08 PM, and Emmanuel Rousseau, we're, we are still moving forward as planned.
You are still playing, okay, all right. I just, I had heard that she had some second, second thoughts about it. That's, and I just wanna make sure that I, okay, I'm misinformed.
Me too.
Okay, so...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, no, no, I'm going to go around. So, Ms. Cave, do you have any, or anybody, any questions there? Okay, Mrs. Manichari?
Thank you. I think this is, could potentially be a life-changing experience for any high school student who is given the opportunity to study abroad during spring break. I did a program at Stanford summer before my senior year, associated with ASB, and I studied abroad in Madrid, at The Hague, and so on, and they were, they changed who I am. I just have a nagging concern to ensure that there will, there will be adequate supervision. These are minors, they're high schoolers, and so I wanna make sure that both our students and the district is protected.
Okay, I'd like to make a comment. I also know that this will also be during Passover, as I heard that it might be during Passover. That was one of the things about it. I'll pass this over to Mrs. Sabag.
Yeah, so I wanted to know, Dr. Seaman, how exactly is, first of all, this is fantastic. I agree with Mrs. Manichari. My, I have a child that also went to school abroad, and that is the best experience of a lifetime. I know they're not actually going to school, but they're going to visit the community of the language and the history that they have been studying, and I would love this kind of idea to continue, you know, with other programs that we have. My question is, how exactly are we doing this? Like, is, I had a few questions, and so I understand that the students are gonna be paying their way, right? The chaperones are gonna be watching the students, and what exactly are we approving? Are we approving the trip itself, or are we approving to pay for the, for the chaperones? What is actually entailed here?
Yep, so ultimately, we as, well, you guys as the elected officials, we bring to anytime we have an out-of-county field trip. So, you're actually approving the out-of-county field trip for our insurance to be able to cover the trip. Our students are covering their own cost within that. We vetted out three different programs, three different international travel programs for students. We went with the BEST program, so we did a vetting process. They're going to assist with all the registration, passport connections, flight scheduling.
I'm sorry, can you back up a little bit? You said that we hired a program to do, we hired a firm to do this?
We've selected a firm to do it. The firm does the work for us. There's multiple educational trip...
Organizations.
Yes, organizations out there.
I love that. And then, can I ask you, this is through a club, right, or is it through the classroom?
So, so there's criteria, so ultimately, we start with our Advanced Placement French students, and then we work our way down. We're, our goal is to primarily focus on our older students, to give them the example of practicing their AP French skills before they take the AP exam.
So, is this only for the seniors, or is it...
We're starting there first, so our goal is 20 students, to be able to take them on the trip. We offered it to our AP French students, and we'll offer to our French IV students, and French III students, to ensure that we are able to fill the full field trip.
So, the students are only going to be French students, right?
Correct, yep.
Not our regular VHS students? So, it's gonna be the seniors only, I'm understanding?
We're starting with seniors, and then for some of them, they may not be able to travel. They may have already scheduled...
Oh, so if you have an opening, then juniors and other students can apply?
Yep, and then we go to the younger levels, but it is for our French-speaking students.
Okay, so it's blocked off at 20 students. How many chaperones do we have?
We have three, so all three of our French teachers. We have our middle-school French teacher... We have our middle school French teacher attending, our high school French teacher attending, and we have a Spanish-French teacher at the high school that teaches, I think, two sections of French and three sections of Spanish. She'll also be attending.
And this is going to be at the time of spring break, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So school will be closed while they're going on the trip? And they're not going to miss any instructional time?
There's two days overlap, just because of, to be able to get the full experience. They're typically run like seven to, seven, nine, or 11 days, depending on the experience that we're cultivating for the students. And then you have to incorporate, there is some travel, jet lag, that type of stuff.
And there's going to be like a tour guide, so itinerary, everything's going to be, okay. So now, my next question is, do the parents have an opportunity to also chaperone with the students, and they pay their own way?
We, we would rather.
And the reason I'm asking is because I feel like, you know, just tell me your thoughts, but 20 kids to three adults is a little too much.
Yeah.
They're high school.
Yeah, they're high school. We, it's, it's, so our, our, our field trip is 10 to 1. So it's one adult per 10 children.
But this is like 24/7?
Yep, but, so we, we have three more. The organization provides us with all the tour guides and all that. We prefer, and I would say this to anybody in the community, your child will act differently if you're in the presence. And so part of the goal of a, of a field trip like this is to build that independence, allow them to step out of their comfort zone, allow them to speak the language locally, participate in some of the activities that are curated for them. And so that's, that's just us TK through 12th grade, is allowing, as, as much as our families would like to be involved in our field trip process, part of the field trip process is to allow our students that bit of independence.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I would like to address what you just said, Mr. Seaman, as a teacher.
To speak French.
Who used to take students to events, Yosemite, and so on and so forth. We always, we were very, very leery as teachers when parents came along. It changed the whole thing for the students, and many times, when they, we do that, we would ask the student, is that, if your mother wants to go, and we, we need another chap, would you like to have them? And many students would say, no. They don't want their parent around, and I think that that is totally understandable.
How about trustee Sabag instead of mom?
Well, how about Mrs. Marcus and her?
I volunteer to go.
I'm a grandmother.
I'll volunteer too.
Yeah.
I'd love to go.
So I understand that situation where you explained about parents going, because I do recall trips to Yosemite and trips where we were short of people to take the kids in as chaperones, and it was like they were looking over their shoulders at the, and it just, it destroyed the experience for the kids. So I, and I, so with that in mind, I will call for the question. All those in favor of approval of the BH?
We need a motion.
Did we not have a motion yet? Oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion.
I'm, I move for item 10F, approval of B H H S out-of-country trip. B H H S French Students and French Club, March 25 to April 2, 2026 slash Paris, Normandy, and Loire.
Loire, Loire.
Valley, France.
Okay, and I, do I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? No, okay, passes five, oh, and one. Okay. The public hearing on 2025-2026 Sunshine Items for the negotiations between the Beverly Hills Unified School District and the certificated unit of the Beverly Hills Education Association is now open at 6:53, 6:57. And in compliance with the provisions of the Government Code, Section 354, 3547.5, the Board of Education of the Beverly Hills Unified School District will now receive public input regarding the proposed Sunshine Articles. Article 2, association rights. Article 3, salaries. Article 5, benefits. Article 7, class size. Article 4, hours. Article 17, district rights related to the 2025-26 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Beverly Hills Unified School District and the BHEA-certificated unit, exclusive representatives covering matters within the scope of representation. The public has been invited to email their questions to Dr. Seaman. Dr. Seaman, have you received any questions or comments?
I have not.
Okay, the Board of Education has heard your comments, and we thank you very much for your input. The public hearing comment is now closed at 6:59 PM. All right, now to business and claims. I need a motion for the rejection of claim 662874. I will make a motion to reject claim 662874.
I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Manicherry. Questions or anything? Okay, call for the question. All those in favor of rejecting the claim, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, five and oh and one provisional. I know that there's not much conflict this time, Mrs. Kevay, but we would love to have your student board report now.
Your wish is my command.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you let me screen share, please? Here we go, student board report for November 4th, 2025. First off, we have Halloween at the high school. We had a few different events that took place, which I'll get to later, but we had a great time. Lots of students dressed up, lots of the staff dressed up. We had a mariachi band who was in the hallway, which was really fun, and ASB had a little costume competition, and also Normanade passed out some donuts. We had a very festive Halloween. Next, you know, I have to shout out my dance company. We did our photo shoot for our poster, which, I don't know when we're going to get the poster, but it's around the corner, and the whole theme is the Four Seasons, so we're all dressed in different colors for the Four Seasons, so.
Love those costumes.
Yeah, really cute. We had an amazing time. Next, we had Club Congress. This is basically an event that ASB hosts, where all of the club presidents or members will come to this meeting, and we host it like once a month, once every two months. And basically, this just makes sure that all of our clubs on campus are moving forward, they're like focused on their goals, and they aren't slacking off, or else ASB will have to deal with those clubs individually. But this is basically just how we keep all of the club presidents in check. So we had that. This is what I was talking about earlier, Normanade had their little Halloween event, they were passing out a bunch of different donuts, and every time Normanade has these events, there's always a line out to nowhere, because everyone just wants a donut, so. Yep, that was fun. Next, we have the Horseman biking on Wednesdays with Dr. Chernus featured. This is just such an adorable picture. I really believe in biking, and this is just so cute, so I had to include it. Next, I wanted to shout out the Albion Street event that the high school does. I actually have a little note to go with this. So basically, the Albion Street Field Trip and Fundraiser has been a tradition between Beverly Hills High School and our sister school, which is Albion Elementary, for almost 100 years, which marks the longest-standing tradition at our school. We go to Albion every December to take gifts. Dance Company performs there, and we bring a lot of spirit to the underprivileged children at this school, and the gift that we give them is often the only gift that they get in the entire year. So this is extremely special to them, this is extremely special to us. ASB, Service Learning, Dance Company, we all go on this trip, we perform, we have fun with the kids, and this is just a great way to raise spirit during the holiday season. Oh, I don't know why I just did that. Okay, next, we have Run of the Stars, and this is basically just an honor for the legacy of a student Mason Duncan in the fight against cancer. So we had a bunch of students come out and participate. I have some pictures here, and then on the next slide, so fabulous, for a great cause. And that's it for my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's go around the horn. Mr. Stewart?
Can you please share what AI scheduling app that you use? Because I don't know how you fit in all of this stuff into your life. I really need this. It's crazy. Again, you know, your reports are awesome. I'm so grateful that Dr. Chernus went first, so I don't accuse him of plagiarism for the 11th week in a row. Again, just always super impressive, and the moment you graduate, I'd love you to come work for me, because your spreadsheet game is, or your presentation game is sick, so.
Thanks for the offer.
Mrs. Manicherry?
No comment other than to say thank you for reminding us how, how great things are at B H H S.
Thank you. Ms., Dr. Stern?
I love the Albion Street. And Debra and I remember when my son was in the high school, they did that, and I think, isn't teen B H E F also a part of that, or?
I'm not sure if teen B H E F is a part of that, but any student, any senior at the high school can sign up and join.
Oh, Dustin, you want to say?
Team, team B H E F is also raising money for our families that are associated with the military and/or financial need for the holidays, which is in addition to what we do at the B H H S specifically for Albion Street, through our Service Learning, ASB, Dance Company. It's about 20 of you guys all come together and make this happen. So two efforts, but yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Good report.
Thank you. Mrs. Sabag?
Charlotte, thank you for a wonderful report, and I, I have a question. You said that you check the, checking the clubs, like the Club Congress. Can you explain, how exactly do you check on the presidents of each club? How do you check if they're doing what they're supposed to do?
Yeah, so basically, we have a separate Google Classroom, which is dedicated to all of the presidents of clubs, and they are required to submit their club minutes and their agenda for every single meeting that they have. They're also required to have eight meetings per year and four meetings per semester, which would be like two per quarter. So those have due dates, and Mr. Hangler, who is the head of ASB, he basically goes through all of them to make sure that those are submitted on time, and that each club is, each club president is keeping up with their club meetings, and they're also required to submit picture proof that they had a club. So they take pictures at the club with all of the members, and basically, the specific Club Congress meeting that we have just like reinforces what you need to be doing, and it's kind of like a checkpoint to make sure you're on the right track.
I love that. Thank you for explaining that, because I had no idea. I do know that we have a teacher and educator in each club that is assigned, right? And they get paid stipend or a unit, you know, something in that matter, right, Dr. Seaman?
I apologize, there was another question.
Oh, sorry. So I, I just, it, it's very interesting. So these clubs are really serious, and they're so serious that it actually helps them when they're doing their applications for colleges and universities. So they're not just a club to say they're a club, they're actually getting together, they're having meetings and minutes, and they have a teacher there who's actually getting paid to be there. So I think it's, it's incredible, and then some of the clubs get to go to France, including the, you know, the class. So a great experience, because the students actually get to think of what club they would like to do. So it's, it's, it's incredible. So thank you, thank you for that.
Okay, well, I would like to tell you that the clubs are alive and well, because I know of one club yesterday called the Mock Trial.
Yes.
And they went downtown to the Stanley Mosque, Federal Building, and they did a mock trial with another school, and they had the witnesses and the judges, and they had the lawyers and all the kids, they participated in it, and it was really a wonderful experience.
Mrs. Marcus, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I texted my daughter, because she was there, and I go, how are you getting home? And she said, Mrs. Marcus' son. I'm like, oh my gosh, does he even know who you are? And she's, no.
Now I will brag.
She said, no.
I will brag now. So at the conclusion of the.
I love that.
Did she tell you who got the most valuable person on our team?
No, she just, she showed me a picture that they were in court, and I said, what did you do? And I, probably your granddaughter, if you're already smiling.
She was a witness.
From ear to, ear to ear, yeah. I think that is so fantastic. They go to downtown, they're in a courtroom, and they're actually, you know, oh my gosh, and for your son to be involved.
What grade is your daughter in?
10th.
Okay, well, I think my son mentioned that one was a 10th grader and one, and I didn't know it was your daughter.
And I didn't know it was your granddaughter. There you go.
And my son, who drove it.
All on their own, this is all on their own.
Yes, and I would like to say, the most valuable person on that team for Beverly Hills was Miss Aleah Marcus. She got the award. And, and by the way, that's picked by the other team.
I love it.
We may or may not have seen that coming, Mrs. Marcus. We may or may not have seen that coming.
Well, I was, I didn't know it, and I didn't even know that.
I didn't even tell her anything. I didn't even know she was going. She just went.
Now, that's, that's what I found unbelievable, that you didn't know.
I didn't know.
And they went downtown at 5 o'clock at night.
Yes, I tracked her at 7 o'clock at night, she's like, in downtown, like, what are you doing? Where are you? Who are you with? I mean, she's extremely responsible. And then she's coming back, I go, did you eat? We're going out to dinner. Who are you going out to dinner with? Mrs. Marcus' son. I'm like, what? So thank you, tell Marty thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, so that, I just wanted to share that, so I, and some kids are in more than one club, too. They don't just have one club, they go to several clubs, because they're on different days, and they can do that. They don't have to pick and choose based on the fact that there's only one choice on that day. They have, so, I think they have something like 80 or 90 clubs at the high school, so that was really very good. Okay, well, thank you for that comment. I, I didn't, wasn't going to say anything, but it opened it up, so. I'm now going to go to communication from the board members. I'll start with you, please, Ms. Kevay.
Well, I just wanted to, first off, congratulate our newest member, Dr. Gates, was it? Yes, I wanted to congratulate him, and yeah, I think we're doing great work, and I'm just really excited for everything that's to come.
Thank you so much. Mr. Stewart?
I guess I have done a lot in the last couple of weeks that I could talk about, but instead of boring y'all with that, I want to take this moment to thank Dr. Seaman. I'm grateful to Dr. Gates, and thank you so much, but it would be not honest to just recognize the unbelievable stress, sorry, that we've put you under. We have asked more from you than pretty much anyone I've ever seen here, and the answer is always yes. And every time I see you here, you always have such a positive attitude, you always lead with such strength, you are just someone that resilience is your middle name. The one week that you were not here, I missed you. And you just have this dynamicness that is infectious, and everyone who's around you just becomes better at what they do. So although I do have all the faith in the world in Dr. Gates, in the incredible job that he's going to do, I do not think that this district would have survived without the incredible job that you did, not only in stepping up in HR, but the umpteen number of things that we ask you to do that the community doesn't even know that we ask of you. So thank you so much for your leadership, for your brotherhood, and for everything that you do for our staff, for our board, for our community, and especially for our. you do for our staff, for our board, for our community, and especially for our kids.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Manicherry.
Thank you. I wholeheartedly agree and echo your statements and I also thank you, Dr. Seaman. I, I wish that the shining star of this board meeting was the strategic plan, which should have been the shining star because it is really a piece of art. This is the contract that we have as a board with our leadership team, with our site administrators, and with all of our staff who work day in and day out. And this strategic plan is what it's all about. It, I mean, so much happens on a daily basis among our four schools and our five sites, but really what, what has been put together here in the various goals, the six goals, the first pertaining to student achievement, the second pertaining to teaching and learning, the third pertaining to student engagement, the fourth pertaining to facilities, and the fifth fiscal responsibility, is a testament to the hard work that is already taking place. This is not something that.
School safety and security is also on that.
Yes. And if I missed it, excuse me, goal six, school safety and security. This, this document is, is what it's all about. And I invite our community to please take the time to review it. What's happening at the district is, in my opinion, something that is respectable, it's honest, and it's ambitious. We are working really hard and our entire staff is working really hard to help BHUSD be the best that it possibly can be. In the last couple of years of being on the board, I have approved two supplemental early retirement plans and I don't want to approve more. I only want to hire more teachers and more staff. And so my commitment is every day I get up and I try to do my best as a board member and a community member to advance these six goals and to work with my colleagues with respect and integrity and Dr. Churnus, Dr. Seaman, and the rest of our staff. And so please, take a look at this contract that we basically have prepared and, and this is what we're holding ourselves accountable to. And I look forward to hearing feedback from the community about it. And maybe we'll get lucky and maybe the, the papers will cover this. Maybe Dr. Stern will call them tomorrow morning and ask them to talk about this instead of the negativity.
I've never called them, they reach out to me by email.
Dr. Stern.
I like what trustee Stewart had to say about Dr. Seaman, amazing. And he does, he always is positive, energetic, always a can-do attitude. And I really also liked the strategic plan that was distilled very nicely into this document. One of the things that I took particular interest in was the student engagement piece and I love the idea. And thank you, Dr. Seaman, for adding again to relaunch the parent math and literacy nights because as we know, if the, if the home and school partnerships share a vision about excellence in, in math and literacy, then it really does translate to our kids. And we're very lucky that we have a very educated population of parents and I know that they want the best for their kids, so I, I strongly support all of those literacy and math nights. I also want to say, November is Military Family Veterans Native American Heritage Month and shout out to all those folks, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sabag.
Yes, so I can't think of anything that was, you know, I, I love that Colby put out the time capsule, that was an exciting moment. I just want to say that no matter what happens, no matter the noise, we as a board are just strong. So I want the community to understand that. We are here as five people for a reason, so that everybody can have their own opinions and to speak up, but we are always courteous and respectful to each other. And I also want to again say that it's so important to, to study. I mean, we're volunteers, so we're basically putting in our time, not just to put it in. I mean, if we're already here, we're doing the best that we can possibly do. And the criticism is completely unnecessary. Again, tomorrow I'm going to be taking another four-hour course in the Masters in Governance and the day after that I'm going to take another four-hour course because I take this incredibly serious. I wouldn't be here if I didn't. So I, I do believe that we are all like that. And the reason I said what I said is because I'm really thrilled that I don't have anybody coercing, coercing me or telling me what to do because they want to be, you know, something in my ear. I don't have that and I won't allow that. I have my own opinions. And if we're in closed session, it's much different than it is in open session, so there's a lot that people don't know. And these are how we come up with the decisions that we come up. And we are here to protect the district, to protect our students, we watch every penny and we do what is best for this district. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few comments. For the, first of all, I want to thank the staff, Dr. Seaman, for the, all the suggestions that you incorporated during the strategic plan that we made. I really liked the way it came out. I hope that everybody will read it, as our, my colleagues have said. It is our goal and we have a rubric to measure everything against and to see how we're doing and where we're going. And that is important to me as a board member. Dr. Churnus, your superintendent's advisory committee. I asked you how many people showed up and you said to me something like 35 or 40 and I said, wow. He said, well, I thought you were going to select. He says, I couldn't, I just took everybody. And I thought to myself, I wonder how that worked out with all those people, only to hear that the comments and everything about it are so, it was so well organized and so well done and everybody got to say their piece and, and to share what they wanted. And I thought that was really an amazing thing that we are on the road to including people in the community as our stakeholders. So I thought that was a very good thing. Since I witnessed some, I want to talk about, I, I was unfortunately, and I know the one for this week was canceled, I know it will be, again, the instructional tour. I did attend the one at Horseman and I have to tell you, I don't know, did I mention this already? So I, I was amazed at the different teaching styles. I was amazed at the interaction with the students and their teachers and the classmates, the different styles. And what really impressed me also was the rooms themselves were warm and inviting and they, they had loads of information for the kids on there. And it, it was just, you have to attend a TK class to watch some of these women who teach, or I think there may be a man, I don't remember. They are so great. It's, it blows my mind how, how they work with these kids and what they get from them. It was amazing. And I'm looking forward to the next one. I don't know when it is, I don't know that I've been, I know I had El Rodeo, but it got canceled, so I don't know what's going to happen there. While we're on the road to thanking people, I would like to thank Ms. Chrissy Austin for keeping me on my toes during a meeting because you may notice that I often take my mind off things and I look at my telephone and I don't even know where it is right now. And I'm getting a message for her that I did something wrong or I didn't do something I was supposed to do. And without her, I don't know what I would do. So thank you, Chrissy, for all your help. And to Colby, he's amazing. And I don't know what I'd do with him because how would I do Mrs. Marcus meets? And he's just, and to my friend Josh. Josh, every time I come with my computer, you're waiting for me to put it up and it just makes me feel so good and I want to thank you so much for that. So I'm thanking some of the people that are behind the scenes and that I think they needed. And to the security, Mr. Ron, thank you. And to other people that are here, I, whenever I go by, I see him wave at me, I'm, he knows my car by now. I can't get through the street of Fairrexford without getting noticed that I'm leaving, going somewhere. So with that in mind, after there are nothing else to attend to, it is now 7:20, 7:23? Wow, I'm going, and remind you all that our next meeting is going to be November 18th here in this room and the next one after that will be 12, December 9. And please put on your calendar December 16. It will be the reorganization meeting for this school board. Thank you so much, have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.